Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. So we are just a minute away from going live. So this will be broadcast live on fbg.live's YouTube channel tonight. So we will also give reports if we can about how many people are watching live here tonight. So we took all your questions and we consolidated them into seven questions for the city council tonight. And if there's room for an extra question, this is timed out to take us to 7:30. And if we have time to last that, we'll bring somebody in the audience to ask a question. And I've already selected the individual so that we can move it along quickly. The one thing I ask the individual, and the judge will appreciate this, she cannot ask a question about the library cap. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are live. So let's get started. Welcome to the 2025 City Council Candidate Forum. Tonight's live broadcast by fbg.live, and the forum is sponsored by Security State Bank and Trust. We appreciate the community's support by Dan Kep and his team. Also, if you don't know, they're supporting a new entrepreneurial program at the high school that will start this fall. The protocol tonight is that each candidate will have a three-minute opening and closing statement. The order was determined by a draw done at the chamber office by the staff. The chamber received nearly 40 questions. We consolidated those into three, into seven questions. The first question, we took the top three issues affecting the city as the opinion of the people who sent in those questions. And so they will have four minutes to answer that, those three topics. After that, they'll have two minutes for each topic. The candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds time is left for that. We also have a trap door if they go past 30 seconds.[141.38][141.38](laughter) As I said, time permitting, we'll ask, we'll have one person from the audience ask a question. For our fellow citizens tonight that are not here who ask questions that send them in to us, we will consolidate those questions, send them to each of the candidates, and then the candidates that they're choosing will either answer those questions on social media or on their websites for that. So let's get started. We're going in alphabetical order tonight. So Todd, Todd for fbg. Todd owns Sierra Homes. He serves on the Fredericksburg Historic Review Board and has served on the following committees: Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Historic District Guideline Steering Committee, and Workforce Housing Advisory Board. He served six years on the Chamber Board, was the Chamber's 2024 Man of the Year, and chaired the Chamber's Workforce Development Committee. He was involved in Leadership County for six years. Todd was also a founding member of Casa Uber Alice and the Grace Center Board of Directors, serves on the Hill Country SPCA Facilities Committee, and the Friends of Fredericksburg Nature Center Advisory Committee. Next is Charlie Keeney. He has called Fredericksburg home for 70-plus years and has been involved in public service for most of those years with membership and leadership roles on various boards, city council, and volunteering at many local and county fundraisers. He graduated from St. Mary's High School and earned his BBA degree from Texas A&amp;M, GIGEM. And he and his wife Jeanne, of 50 years, have three children and seven grandchildren. Two of the grandkids are calling Fredericksburg home. He enjoys free time with his family, friends, folks he meets each day in the outdoors. You may even see him pedaling around town on his red moped. Cheryl Rowan grew up in a rural community of about 10,000 in the Midwest. She and her husband moved to Fredericksburg seven years ago, having lived in Texas for 30 years in west Texas in the Houston area. Cheryl holds a BS degree in biology, a certificate in medical technology, and a master's degree in library and information science. She has worked as a medical librarian, public librarian, copy editor, blog writer, and volunteer coordinator. Here in Fredericksburg, she was part of the Fredericksburg Citizen University, is a rotarian, and serves on the board of the Good Samaritan Center. Bobby Watson moved to Fredericksburg in 1989 from Addison, Texas, where he was a city councilman. He retired with over 42 years of experience as a successful business owner. Bobby has over 19 years of continuous involvement in the Fredericksburg community, which includes leadership roles in Leadership Gillespie County, the Fredericksburg Chamber, the Fredericksburg Charter Review Committee. He's also served on the Fredericksburg CDB Board, Fredericksburg P&amp;Z, Gillespie County EDC, Gillespie County Airport Board, and elected the five terms as city councilman. Bobby has been married to Robin Watson for five years and attends the Hill Country Church. So, let's get to the first question. So tonight, they will go in a specific order that we picked, and then they rotate around. So the first question will start off...
Opening statements, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. I don't have it up. So we're going to start with opening statements. It's over here. There it is. Opening statements, first is Todd Edson. That'll be followed by Bobby, then Charlie Keeney, and Cheryl Rowan. So Todd, over to you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to Chamber Board, Chamber staff for putting this forum on. Thanks to the Albert Hotel for hosting. I'd like to thank Randy Bryley for his two-year service on city council. Appreciate everything that you've done. My biggest shout-out to my wife Caroline for supporting me on this campaign journey that we're on. I am Todd Edson. I am running for city council because I love this community. I love giving back. If you read a deeper bio than what Jim just read off on my website or in the newspaper, you know I love being involved. So, the comprehensive plan and parts master plan was adopted in 2024 by the city. I was honored to work on that for 18 months along with many people in this room. What I don't want to see is what I believe Clinton Bailey and maybe Mayor said at different times. Let's not do all this work, put it in a three-ring binder, and just set it, put it on a shelf and let it collect dust. So, later, to let the cat out of the bag, we're going to talk about some big issues, especially in question one, that is in the comp plan or that, you know, we need to address through the comp plan. But there are things in there that the surveys said many, many citizens want, and that's some family amenities, some more parks, some more parks and recreation amenities, more trails, more green space, walkways, good sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian safety, simple, simple stuff, I think. So, if the comp plan, through your input, because what I love about a comprehensive plan versus a strategic plan, a comprehensive plan is external, strategic plan is internal. So, 3,000 people roughly responded to all of the surveys over 18 months, and we should put those priorities in the city budget. That's what I'd like to get accomplished besides the big stuff that we're going to talk about here soon.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Watson. Just to correct my introduction, I moved here in 1999, and I did come from Addison. I grew up in Dallas, but I did come from Addison where I was on the city council there. Addison and Fredericksburg are a lot alike, and that when I was there, they had 11,000 people at night. During the day, they had 250,000 people. So it was a bedroom community for Dallas. They also had a nice airport that was the largest municipal airport in the nation. So, we don't want to go there. My bio is in the newspaper. I've served on a lot of boards. I've served...I've always felt that my way of giving back is to serve Fredericksburg, and I hope that you agree that I've done a good job with that. Just to let you know what my priorities are this year, number one is city infrastructure. We've got a lot of issues coming, growth, water, other things that we'll talk about. But infrastructure's always been a big deal for me because if you don't have good infrastructure, you really don't have a good town. We're a town of 11,000, almost 12, but on the weekends, we get up to 30, 40,000 people. We have to have the infrastructure to take care of that. So that is one of my priorities. The second is transportation, in-town transportation. I'm not talking about a relief route or anything like that, but how do you get around town? And I think there's some proposals on the table that we need to consider, we need to talk about and vote on. I think it will give everybody some relief from going north, south, east, and west. Another thing is Main Street. I don't think the city council or the city has paid much attention to Main Street. It's, especially the golden blocks. It is the lifeblood of our tourism industry. It's also where residents go to shop. And we've got 75 new trash cans. I don't know if anybody noticed, but we've got new trash cans. That's the first step. I would like to see us cleaning the streets weekly. I would like us to see us cleaning the sidewalks, making more improvements, but making it a really nice area for residents.
City employees... 30 seconds.
Thank you. City employees, that's the city's number-one asset, and I want to make sure that we continue to give them competitive wages and competitive benefits. It's a big priority for me. And the last item is young families. We don't pay enough attention to young families, and since COVID, we've had a tremendous growth in young families in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
Thank you very much, Jim. I want to thank you folks for showing up, and I want to thank the folks for watching now on livestream, and I want to thank Security State Bank and Trust for sponsoring this I had the good fortune of being born here, and whether you've been here a few months or 70-plus years, this is a great community to be in. I'm not going to go through a whole lot of things I've done, but community service is one of the top priorities I have. And I've told people this before. If you give to this community, it's going to give back 10 times more, 20 times more than what you put into it. And as Bobby indicated, you know, people have asked me, why are you, why are you running for this position? Well, the answer is simple. This is a people business, and Fredericksburg is going through a rapid change, as we all are aware of, with the growth that we have. We've become the Gold Rush of California. And I have the qualifications and the experience of being here for 70 years and being on different leaderships, the city council, the school board, et cetera. And I have the ability to know what has been going on. I'm a Realtor now. I know the pulse of this community. I had an experience of being an Exxon dealer across from the Nemets Museum for 24 years. I got to see the transition of Fredericksburg, starting in the '70s, the '80s, '90s, and 2000, as it transitioned each block east of Fredericksburg, and it went west as well. You know, I've always been an advocate for parks, and this is no slam on Mr. Gaddis because we eat there and my grandkids spend more money back in the area of the arcade. But when it wins the best entertainment for kids, we have a problem. Parks are important. People move here with families for parks. They move here for schools. We have four great schools. Older people move here for great medical and the security of their homes. Parks are certainly a priority. Another priority is, Bobby, is water. Water is getting to be the new goal, the new oil. It's becoming very, our water is declining, our demand is increasing, and I don't know if we're going to see any foreseeable rain that's going to make that possible for us to continue. I applaud the city. Been on it. We're on stage four watering.
30 seconds.
They've done leak tests, and the other issues that I have is the tourism and impact on our city. And I will work to the best of my abilities after I'm elected to help solve some of these problems. And as Todd said, this comprehensive plan needs to blow the dust off, and let's start working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jim, for the introduction, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this candidate forum. Want to thank the Albert Hotel for hosting the event, and our sponsor as well, and fbg.live for your livestream of this evening. And actually, my deep thanks to each of you for taking the time to attend this evening, as well as to those who are watching the livestream. I really appreciate that you have taken time away from family and other obligations to become better informed about your choices for this upcoming election for the two positions on city council. Looking around this room is a bit humbling because so many of you are folks that I have come to know. One of the most gratifying things in life to me is making connections with people and discovering things that I have in common with them. I inherited the trait of deliberate decision-making from my parents. I believe that all of my life experiences have prepared me for and brought me to this point. I was not born in Fredericksburg, the Hill Country, or even in Texas. My parents decided to move here after looking for a place that would allow them to be close to me as an only child and their grandchildren. They were drawn to the small rural community, the German heritage, my maiden name is somewhat German, if you don't know that, and the landscape which reminded them of southern Wisconsin. They settled here permanently, and when they needed more support from family, my husband and I chose to move here full-time from the Houston area. One of the first things I did after moving here was to seek ways to become involved in the community, and within months, I had become a volunteer at the Pioneer Museum, a bit later at the Good Samaritan Center, and most recently, as a rotarian. A deep desire to serve motivates my actions. I am not, nor do I aspire to be a politician. I am a candidate for city council to be a public servant. My career choices, as well as personal ones, have been motivated by a calling to serve, not only locally, but through national and international organizations. Now, I believe I have the time and energy to offer to serve here at a deeper and different level. My parents are no longer living, and my three adult children have busy lives with their own children in their other communities. The issues I am passionate about are ones that will improve the quality of life here for all of us, including management of water resources, workforce housing, safety and accessibility, increased opportunities for young families, and managing our robust tourism industry.
Thank you, Cheryl. Now we're ready for the first question. So the first question, each candidate will have four minutes to answer. It has three components. It will go in the order of Cheryl, Charlie, Bobby, and Todd. The questions from our survey, the top three questions from our survey were about water, development, growth, pro and con, and affordable housing. These three issues are intertwined. How will you address these issues?
Thank you, Jim, and the chamber. I'm actually really grateful that you chose to combine these issues because the more I talk to folks in the community, these are the top issues that rise to the surface. And of course, water, I think, is definitely on everyone's mind. I have not been a part of city council. However, since moving here, I made every effort to attend coffee with the city manager, and I have attended or listened to every city council meeting since deciding to run early in January. I have found these meetings to be extremely informative, and in particular, the meeting this last week, one of the focal points, albeit several hours into the meeting, was an update on water given as a joint presentation between Chris Canazy and Paul Bab, who is the head of the Hill Country Underground Water Conservation District. It is no secret to any of you that average rainfall is down, particularly since 2010, and we are in stage four water restrictions here in the city. I want to commend the city, the city council, the mayor, the city manager, and other city staff for their efforts in working on this issue. Chris identified five water conservation member initiatives that the city is currently implemented, a robust water system, leak detection system, smart meters, reuse of residual and runoff water, water rate adjustments, and of course, our watering restrictions. I heard an interesting interview this morning with an author, and I believe this author, they said this is going to be made into a documentary, about links between water and energy in the state of Texas. And to me, this really resonated because we all know that energy is another important factor within our state, and there are a lot of connections that we can make between those two, and I think we have a lot to learn from one another in moving that, in that direction. I like to use the word workforce housing instead of affordable housing. This, again, is something that raises to the top of many people's minds. We have families, as well as older adults, who need to be able to live affordably in this community. I applaud the city again this past week for their efforts in saying no to future development. I want to let you know that I feel that the city currently, and in the projection of the future, is not saying yes to everything that comes to the door. It is important that you understand that the city has limitations because of the mandates that come from our state, and I think many of us may be aware that that may even be further hampered due to the current legislative session. I want to finally address development briefly and call out again the city's comprehensive plan. Todd alluded to this in his opening remarks. I support the city's comprehensive plan. There are initiatives there to, in particular regarding growth, to keep the sense of small-town sensitive growth, and I do support that.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, thank you. You know, water, what really excites me is when I read scientists have found an exo planet like 28 million light-years away, and they think there's water on it. I don't know how they do that, but they're excited because water is life, and there's water, there's life. Water is critical to our citizens. It's an issue that we're hearing all over the state, especially in the dry areas. Again, the city is, as I understand, is going to send out 1,000 letters to people who are abusing the water restrictions and watering on weekends. I think it's important that they get, that, I think it's a nice thing to do, but after that, it's time to say, hey, we're going to slap you on the hand more so than that. We're going to put some money out of your pocket. Water is an important feature. I'm a firm believer, and I want to be sure I get this correct this time, the city is not selling water out of the city since 2013. However, if you do go look at the charter of Fredericksburg, you will find there is a section in there, the city may sell water and other services outside the city limits. Now, being on the city council, being elected to the city council, I would tell you, I would never look at that very favorably, to sell water outside the city limit. I hope I got that correct this time. Water, as I said before, is becoming the gold and the oil of Texas. As far as annexation and development, I'm going to jump ahead over there a little bit, is I was real proud that they did pause that development until further study is done on water, which I understand they're going to get an RFP, Request for Proposals, on a 50-year plan on having that done. I'm 74 years low. I plan to be here 26 more years, so I want to be sure I have plenty of water to drink. And I am going to be here, believe it or not. I have that goal in my life. So that's, when you talk about development, you know, you're going to be talking about people who want to be annexed. I would tell you, there should be a pause or moratorium on any annexations request. Now you have to be asking to be voluntary annexed. The city cannot by state law anymore go out and annex you. So I think that needs to be certainly top priority on no further annexation. Workforce housing, when I first got on the council, I asked the definition, what's workforce, what's affordable, what's attainable housing? I never could get a real defined definition. The city hired two consultants. The first consultant came up, and I'm not going to try to come up with the numbers, but it wasn't anything we could really do at that time. They hired another consultant a few years later, and he came up with a solution for us, and one of them was tax abatements, incentives for a developer to come in. I will tell you that if a developer comes in and wants to develop either housing and our apartments and say they're going to be affordable for workforce housing, then the question I would ask, if they get the tax abatement, who really pays for all the services that those people get? Fire, EMS, everything else? It's us, the taxpayers. So I will tell you right now, I am never going to be in favor of tax abatements and our tax credits to a developer who's coming in here proposing to do affordable housing. And when you talk to these people about affordable housing, I've never heard what do they consider affordable?
30 seconds.
Thank you very much. So it's all kind of in a nutshell. You know, we're growing a dynamic city. We're at the edge, I believe, of what I see being here for so many years, and now is the time to city for it to say, hey, enough's enough. We need to take a hard look at this and see what's in the future down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
On water, the first thing I'd like to state is that we are not running out of water. The city has been working on water conservation for, over the last 10 years while spending $35 million on various infrastructure projects. I'll name a few. We have a new 16-inch water supply line from our Conop wellfield down 290 East. We currently have three supply lines now from two wellfields, with the third wellfield being planned. We have 7 million gallon water storage facility, tanks. Three of them brand-new, four of them have been reconditioned. We're replacing 2-inch water mains throughout town. We've installed new smart meters to help us watch and see what our usage is. We've conducted three leak detection studies. The first study showed we had 12.5% leakage in our system. During the next few years, we got down to 1.4%, but it's creeped back up to 6.5%. The average rural town in Texas has 50% leakage in their system. So every gallon they pump out of the ground, they lose 50% of that. We went into stage four water restrictions with the goal of reducing our usage by 20%. The staggering number is 60% of our usage is for landscape, for our lawns, flower beds, whatever, but landscape. We've been in stage four for a few months now. We still have 1,000 residents that continue to water on weekends and outside of the stage four restrictions. We're going to be sending them letters and asking them to get into compliance, and if they don't, we'll go to the next step and turn it over to code enforcement. But it's very important that we all work together to be in stage four so we can save as much water as we can. As far as development, I'm not opposed to development within the city limits as long as it meets our zoning and building codes and ordinances. I think the next city council needs to take the time to update the ordinances to reflect the more water conservation measures through landscape, low-flow fixtures, and other measures that might be applicable to us. As you noticed in the last council meeting, we stopped a development that was trying to be annexed into the city. So, that's all on that. And then affordable housing, I was on the Affordable Housing Task Force in 2022 and 2023. We did hire a consultant. He brought us several recommendations. Those were presented to the city council at that time, and they all, every recommendation had the use of city land, incentives, the city provide the utilities, and tax abatements. And at the time, the city council felt like the residents of Fredericksburg would not approve those. So there was no action taken on that. Although with the increase in the number of new homes and apartments, this has certainly helped the demand for housing. An example is D.R. Horton has a project on Pica. It's currently sold out except for the sample home. The interesting thing is, over 50% of the people that bought homes in that development are under 40 and work and live here in Fredericksburg. are under 40 and work and live here in Fredericksburg. We currently have 1,400 apartments with an 80, 82% occupancy. In 2020, we had 800 apartments. So we've seen significant growth in apartments. And in 2020, we had 90% occupancy. But we also have 500 more apartments approved to be built. Whether they get built depends on the economy and if they want to proceed with that. So thank you all.
Thank you. Todd?
Okay, rapid fire. Four minutes, three questions, right? Okay, water. The first thing I'd ask everyone in here, please conserve water as residents, as neighbors, as friends, as colleagues. That's where we start. Start with conservation. Number two, I'd like to ask city staff to please put on the top of the webpage, the opening webpage of the city website, a link to the water presentation that Chris did. And so people don't have to go and dig through the website to see it. It was pretty staggering and eye-opening to hear what Chris and Paul had to say. Paul said, unless we, basically unless we get a hurricane, we're going to stage five. And that's pretty drastic. So if elected, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to work with city staff on redoing our watering stages. I think we need to have more than five. I think we could look at maybe six or seven or eight so that we can keep drawing down on allowing 60% of our water go into landscaping. I'd like to see in development ordinance for commercial properties of certain sizes. This would take some investigation and work with staff. Commercial properties have rainwater catchment systems to supplement their irrigation. I'd like to see commercial property ordinance, kind of look at redoing what the minimum landscape requirements are and get away from irrigation, from sprinklers, maybe ask them to do all drip irrigation. I'd like to see rainwater catchment sitting, a rainwater catchment system on the new city hall for irrigation. As several people mentioned, so we've only been four years above average rainfall since 2008. That's 17 years, only four times. Currently in Austin, legislature is looking at Senate Joint Resolution, excuse me, 66 and House Joint Resolution 7, which puts $1 billion in the Texas Water Fund. That would be great, but our state has a surplus every year of like 24 billion. So maybe we should talk to our legislators and get them to put more money in the Texas Water Fund. Interesting thing is House Bill 2626 is trying to start a central Texas Water Authority for five counties. One of those counties is Land Passus. Land Passus County uses the same aquifer that we do. So we need to be mindful of what's going on in Austin. Okay, affordable housing. The number one factor that leads to inaffordability in the United States is NIMBYism, not in my backyard. And we get that here. We've seen that. Okay, so Bobby and I and Kathy Sanford O'Neil, Tim Lindberg with the EDC, we were instrumental in hiring Vince Michelle. And he worked here for a little over 12 months, gave us 22-page report, 24-page report in March of 2022. So just three years ago. We did nothing with it. City staff, nothing. City council did nothing with any of his recommendations. Okay? Two recommendations that came before the housing workforce, the Workforce Housing Board was actually a public facilities corporation project on Friendship on ag land. So it wasn't on the tax rolls. So it wouldn't have cost taxpayers anything, but we didn't do anything about that. So I think we spent money, good money, on hiring Vince. We have lots of information. There's tools in the toolbox. We don't need to continue to kick the can down the road with affordable housing. In the comprehensive plan, 31% of the respondents said that's number one issue with our town. So to answer a question about what is affordable?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So our area median income is $67,000 in Fredericksburg, which equals an average gross income of $102,000. If you use the three-time multiplier factor, that means affordable is $306,000 or less. That's the definition of affordable housing. The D.R. Horton project that was approved Tuesday is going to start at 360. So.
Thank you.
Do I have any more time?
You're out.
Development.
A little extra.
So I appreciated what council did. They approved one, they denied another. I think each development needs to be looked at individually. There are 1,200 available lots to build on in town, but the census data says that by 2030, we're only going to add 712 residents. So do the math.
Great. Thank you very much. Second question, in the order will be Charlie, Cheryl, Todd, and Bobby. The second question, several questions were about family amenities. What is your plan to improve and add more family-friendly amenities for our community? Charlie?
I think I've already alluded to that. Parks, park system, you know, I tell you, we were very fortunate in getting Andrea Schmidt to be our park superintendent. She has really improved our parks. Partnerships with private and social organizations, and I want to give a shout out to the Morning Rotary Club, doing an outstanding job with the race, I'm sorry, the skate park, the basketball court, and the fair park playground. We go to softball games there, and they are, as Lady Bird Johnson would say, with the dedication of Lady Bird Johnson, use it, use it, use it. And it's being used. We're very fortunate now on a property on Friendship that a bunch of folks have gotten together for pickleball, and I play pickleball, I'm pretty damn good, too, and tennis and other, and a walking trail. So that's going on. And we were blessed to have the soccer folks put in a soccer field out at the, what we would call fair park. If you haven't been on the walking trail at Lady Bird Johnson, it's well worth it. It's not intensive. I can even do it. I have stopped at the birdhouse with my grandchildren, and we look for birds. And there's a chalkboard there, you're supposed to put what kind of bird you saw. I wrote penguin. And of course, my grandkids, grandpa, there's no penguins here. So that, again, is what's important for families. And I'm happy to see some developments now by city requests are actually putting in a small park. If they don't, they do a $500 per lot park allotment for the development. So parks, parks, and more parks for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
So parks and outdoor space are kind of one of my passions. I love being in the outdoors. My neighbors will tell you, I walk at least once, usually twice a day. And I have six grandchildren. And my desire is that those kiddos will be able to grow up in places where they can be outside. Because I realize that I don't currently have young children at home, I've made an effort to reach out to young moms and young families in our community. And they're telling me things like, we need more parks, more activities for our kids. But they're also saying something about accessibility, which crosses nicely in a way to older adults who have limited mobility issues. Moms with strollers and other things that they're trying to push down sidewalks sometimes run into obstacles. And so I'd like to see us revisit the sidewalk plan for the city. I'd also like to encourage, and I believe I can facilitate this because I've worked at the Pioneer Museum, relationships between our already existing entities, the library and the Pioneer Museum and other organizations that are providing wonderful programs for our kids. They are willing and ready to partner with each other to provide great activities. I echo what Charlie said. I think our Parks Department has done a great job. I was really excited. I got on our newly updated website for the city recently and noticed there is a scheduled activity for families and children every month of the year in 2025. There are pool events, there was a coin search, and all kinds of great things. Charlie also mentioned the racket and paddle sports thing that the city council is moving forward with. Lots of things we can do. We want this to be a family-friendly place.
Thank you. Todd?
Yes, according to the comp plan, 55.31% of the respondents said that they would be willing to pay higher taxes in order to pay for trails, greenways, and open spaces. 53% would be willing to pay higher taxes for additional recreation facilities and park I think we all agree. We need to be family-friendly. The first amenities, yes, parks. So what should we do about that is what we shouldn't do. We shouldn't get down to the end of budget time in the city and say, oh, we need, we need to cut here, we need to cut there, and go for the simple stuff and cut parks and rec. If Andrea is stressed about the number of staff she has, and the residents want better amenities, then we need to fund staff for parks and recreation. And as I mentioned earlier, and as Cheryl alluded to, sidewalks, so the current budget, annual budget for sidewalks will only get us 434 linear feet of sidewalk. That's one block. We need a whole lot more than that. I mean, I was super proud, Caroline and my daughter Sadie actually did an internship with the city last summer, and she updated the sidewalk plan GIS. And it's pretty amazing to see how many missing sidewalk areas we have where we don't have connectivity from one sidewalk to another. Trails, greenways, everybody's talked about wanting to do something on the creeks, which I think would be really cool. What is behind King Carr's development near HEB is awesome. Unfortunately, it's a dead end from one to another. The city does have a little bit of right-of-way easement on Town Creek, not Barron's Creek. So that is one creek that we can look at to perhaps adding some trails.
Thank you. Bobby?
I think everybody has touched on just about everything, but there's a few things that I'd like to, we've had three projects that have been a public-private partnership. The golf course is public-private, the new soccer fields, and the new racket center that we just approved, the agreement on, at the last meeting. Those have been very successful in getting the projects built, getting the projects paid for, and they have professional operators that operate, especially the golf course. The golf course is the example of that. We were losing close to $700,000 a year several years ago. Currently, we're, they're making over $500,000 a year and improving the course every year. It's been a great partnership. I also think we should look at, it will add to the parks budget, which will require more employees, more equipment. But as developers start developing neighborhoods in our town, we need to start requiring them to put more green space so that that neighborhood will have someplace to go. Sidewalks, currently we put in the budget $150,000 a year primarily for maintenance and to connect a sidewalk with another sidewalk. We don't have the money in the budget to do long stretches of sidewalks, but it's certainly something that we should look at. We've also used that money to improve sidewalks on Main Street. And I think just about everything else was taken.
Great. Thank you very much. So question three will be in the order of Bobby, Todd, Cheryl, and Charlie. Question three is, another concern is about maintaining our small-town culture. Is this a concern of yours? And if so, what actions will you take to maintain our small-town culture? Bobby?
That's a tough one. I only say that because the culture is changing. Several months ago, I started saying, well, Fredericksburg has changed, and it's been changing since 1846. So I moved here 25 years ago. It's different today than it was back then. And for people that moved here six years ago, it's different today than it was. But I think the core culture of Fredericksburg has remained. I don't care who you talk to or what you're involved in, I've never seen a town with more volunteers, more willing to give their time and money to support the list of nonprofits that we have in this town. If you want to get involved, just look in the newspaper when they list all of the nonprofits. I was involved in leadership Gillespie County for several years, and I swore I was going to do a class on how to say no, because if you don't, you can get involved in more things than you know, than you have time for. But I think the culture, to me, the culture has changed some, but not a lot in 25 years. I love this town. It's a very special place to live. And the people that move here seem to come to this town for our culture. And it's just a beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Well, part of our culture is being family-friendly. So we just covered part of that, right? If we have, if we can attract young people and we can keep young people here and keep them engaged and happy, then that's part of a very good culture. Bobby beat me to it, but he is absolutely right. I've never seen a community with so much volunteerism and so many people willing to roll up their sleeves and help out one another. I think that's definitely part of our culture. As far as small town as a definition, because the legislature took away annexation and is getting, is trying to take away ETJ, our small town may be limited to its current size in city limits forever based upon what's going on in Austin. So growth would be in the county. Those people probably will come into town, but keeping our culture the same is not going to happen if people leave. And our growth ends up being more in the county.
Thank you, Todd. Cheryl?
You may have remembered from my bio that I did grow up in a small town, about the same size as Fredericksburg. Small towns are very dear to my heart. And I would actually turn this question a bit back to the person who asked it and saying, I believe that small-town culture starts with us. What's driven people to think that this doesn't exist anymore is the mentality of people driving in from work, raising up the garage door, the garage door goes down, and they don't ever come out again. I want to give a shout out to Clinton. I believe that part of the way that we can foster getting to know our neighbors and this small-town culture is by doing that, getting out and getting to know your neighbors. You may, I hope you're aware that our city manager last, in the last year and a half or so, did town hall meetings in every neighborhood. Those are about to begin again next week. Go to those. Know your neighbors. Go up and down your neighborhood and figure out who lives in your neighborhood. We have the responsibility, I believe, as citizens, to support that small-town culture. The epitome, when I talk to people about what I love about Fredericksburg and this small-town culture, is dance hall nights. If you've been to a dance hall night in marked plots on a Saturday night and watched grandparents, families, little kids, I've seen young women in prom dresses come to those dance hall nights. That is what I love about Fredericksburg. That is our small-town culture, and I believe we can help maintain that.
Thank you. Charlie?
By golly, guten Tag. You couldn't have been speaking Deutsch broken. You don't hear that anymore downtown Fredericksburg. When I was a kid, that's all they spoke. So has our culture changed? Absolutely it has. Has it gone away? No, it has not. changed? Absolutely, it has. Has it gone away? No, it has not. You know, neighbors, I think is very critical, neighbors. And I'm going to give you a story. I didn't quite understand it, but an old man that had a service station, somebody drive in, what kind of town is this? He'd say, what kind of town are you from? Oh, man, they're friendly. People get out, they do things, you know your neighbors. That's the kind of town we got here. Next guy'd come in, say, what kind of town you from? Oh, man, they, people are mean, they're ugly. Well, that's what kind of town we are. It's what you make your community, what he was trying to explain to me. And it is. You know, if you see me on the street, your chances are you're going to have to spend ten or fifteen minutes with me chatting with you, because that's just the kind of person I am. I know my neighbors, and it is, we're a very giving community. As I said before, you give to this community, it's going to give back ten times, twenty times more. And the word no, I agree, but this will get you in trouble, too. I, I volunteer, because once that hand goes up, you're in. It's being involved in the community through a social organization, through your neighborhood, through a church. And I had a neighbor, he said, this friendly, unfriendly is town I've ever been in. And I said, why is that? And I don't know anybody. I said, you know me. I said, how do we meet? Well, you were walking your dog. We got the visiting. I said, are you, are you, are you involved with church? I don't go to church. I'm trying not to make you a Christian. So he was not giving into this community. Our culture is here only because we make it that way. And I'm going to tell you why. We have been blessed with not only us locals, but the influx of all the folks that have moved here by choice. And we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four, the order will be Todd, Bobby, Charlie, and Cheryl. And question four is, another theme in the questions was engaging more citizens and seeking input in the decision process of the city council. How will you involve more citizens in the city council's decision-making process?
First, I like Clinton's coffee with the city manager. That's your first step to understanding what is, you know, what's going on in the city? What's the heartbeat of the city? What's council, what, what is coming before council? All council meetings are open to the public? Come. They're also livestreamed. Pay attention. If you can't make it, watch it on livestream. I would like to, if elected, walk my neighborhood and have my own neighborhood meetings with citizens that live near me, asking them, what's going on? What are you concerned about? Letting them know that my door is open, that my phone, phone is open to them. I think it's about engagement more than anything else.
Great. Thank you very much. Bobby?
Thank you. There are a lot of opportunities to let us know and to be part of the decision-making process. I think Clinton's done an exceptional job of getting the town involved in what the city council does. The coffees have been mentioned, the town halls, twenty-seven of them the last eighteen months. The Citizen University that was formed, I think they're in second year, that's a great way for you to understand how the city works, each department. The council meetings, we have public comment on items listed on the agenda. Very seldom do we have people comment. So if you want to get involved, let us know. Come to the council meetings and tell us what you would like, your opinion on particular items. We also on, on zoning and few other items, we do have public hearings. Very few people show up for that. So if there's something that has a public hearing, show up, let us know what you, what's on your mind and how you think we should vote. It's a great way to, to let us know. Also, every council member has their phone number listed, and they have a city, city email. And you can also contact us through the website. So please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
To answer that question, I'm going to ask a question to you folks, but I don't want you to raise your hand or say anything. How many of you could be here if this were a nine AM meeting? I don't, I don't need, I don't need a hand up, sir. Thank you. You know, nine AM takes a lot of folks out of being able to attend city council meetings. Again, after a council's elected, they do their, a meeting with their procedures and how they want to run their, when and time they want to run their council meeting. So if you want to engage the public, you know, you need to have it at an hour when the general public can possibly come. Whether they come or not, that's their choice. You know, when you have a party in your neighborhood, you always invite your neighbor, because if you're raising too much cane, the neighbor says, well, he did invite us, you know. So I think it's, it'd be something to start with. One, if I'm elected during the procedural, I will ask, hey, can we, I'm one vote, can we move the meetings to in the evening? I know they had a reason for doing that, good reason or not. As I said, the business of the city is the people, and I'm a firm believer in that. If you look on, on my bio in the newspaper, I have my phone number, and I have my email contact, and I will share with you that I am very available. I will, I will respond to every phone call. I will respond to every text, and I will respond to every email as well. May not answer the phone, but if you leave me a message, I will respond. And people ask me,
Thirty seconds.
When I'm invited to call you, I'm going to call you. So public input is certainly important, and it's, it's absolutely necessary for a council to know what the citizens are thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Okay, thank you. Several of the things I would mention have been already said. I'm going to just mention them. Neighborhood town halls being done again this year by the city, coffee with the city manager. I was privileged to be a part of the inaugural class of Citizens University, which began in twenty twenty-four under Clinton and former city secretary Shelley Goodwin. At least two of my classmates are here, and in no small part, actually, my sitting on this stage tonight is a tribute to that level of involvement and my learning about the city functioning through that curriculum. It was amazing. I, in a, I understand the conundrum about off, having city council meetings in the morning instead of the evening. However, many of us do not make good decisions. My father always told me, do not make a major decision after eight PM in the evening. You will regret it. And I know that my mental capacity starts to dwindle, and some of these meetings go on. And I don't know if you also want your city council making decisions at midnight. So just keep that in mind. I want to give a shout out as well to FPG Live again. I know, I believe this initiative started during COVID. I can't say enough about how great it is to be able to not only watch those city council meetings live, but to go back and revisit some of what the business that was discussed. In addition to the other folks who spoke, if I am elected, I will continue my efforts to come to where you are, hear your concerns, and listen to those and respond. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Question five, we'll start with Cheryl, then Charlie, Bobby, and Todd. If the city had one million dollars, seems a little low, one million dollars to invest in the Main Street Historic District, what would be your priorities in that investment?
This order is kind of tricky. So a million dollars. Okay.
It's not a lot.
I'm going to, I forsake of definition so that we all are understanding what is meant by the historic district. When I look at folks on those green bird's eye maps that the visitor's center hands out, we define the historic district as Main Street from roughly Washington Street to Mylum Street on the west, Main Street, and about two blocks north and south. So I'm going to go with that. I would suggest, I would like the city to continue to be involved with development of marked plots. We have a great project going on with the, the construction of the Glockenspiel. We can do more to make that an inviting space. We can develop additional amenities in that space. Gosh. I think there could be additional funding spent with trans, ability to navigate that space, to make sure that everyone can access this space. And I would probably also include some additional funding for city staff that work to maintain those spaces for us.
Thank you very much. Charlie?
Jim, I don't know about you, but I'd take a million bucks and run with it. You know, that, that's a hard question. You know, what do you do with a million dollars in the historical district? And I think it'd be one of those situations where sidewalks would certainly be an area of contention. You know, some of our areas, as, as Todd had mentioned, you know, for the, for people in wheelchairs or handicapped or challenged otherwise, I think that would be an excellent choice of, of the funds. Donating some of that money to the, the Glockenspiel project would be advantageous as well. I will tell you when the, the clock came in, that Gerald Hoover brought in many, many, many years ago, I, I told Gerald, why are we wasting money on that? But the Christmas tree, the Christmas tree, the German Christmas tree, and it's a wonderful asset to our community. We take pictures in front of it all the time with grandkids. So the Glockenspiel would be one of the areas. Also, you know, if you look at some of the facilities there on marked plots, they're probably in need of some repair. You know, the, the grass is taking a beating, so there might be some astral turf. I know that's, that's, I won't say astral turf, but there is grass products out there, artificial grass products now. You'll never know that they're grass, not true grass. So that has come a long way. So there'd be a, and that would reduce water consumption as well. So a million bucks spent on marked plots, I think would be the place to do it. Artificial grass, Glockenspiel, et cetera, and keeping up the Christmas lights and the Christmas trees that we have there, the live oaks that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
One of the first things I'd do is hire more police officers. We, we have a couple of bicycle police officers right now. I would like to see walking police officers as well as additional bicycle police officers. And Clinton and I have talked about this. I would like to form a Main Street Historic District Department, where we have equipment and staff dedicated to keeping Main Street and the historic district clean. And that, that could include, you know, people to empty the trash constantly, landscape. There's areas that we could landscape to make it more appealing, not only to the residents and the visitors. More public restrooms. I think we need more public restrooms, so it takes some of the pressure off the shops, but we don't have enough of those. And then sidewalks. We need to continually to make, making improvements to the sidewalks that we have.
Thank you very much. Todd?
Just to clarify, this is Main Street just in the historic district, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Sidewalks, when we get text dots approval, since they have the right-of-way on the sidewalks, we, yeah, there's lots of broken ones, chipped ones, tripping hazards. That would be the first one. The second one is beautification. So the city went ahead, and we got those brand-new, pretty light poles, street light poles, which I like. But we also paid for the upgrade to have the planters being able to hang plants, hanging pots from them. But I've never seen a single hanging pot of flowers since those went up. That would be a great place to spend the money. And then to have someone on staff actually maintain them and keep them pretty. That wouldn't take a whole lot of money out of a million dollars. Yes, public restrooms, that actually came up in the comp plan, and I agree with Bobby, with more police presence all day long. You know, when the police station changes with City Hall moving, and talking with Chief Warhour, he's hoping that being close to Main Street, being in the substation and City Hall, that he'll be able to dedicate some more police officers to Main Street.
Thank you very much. So question six, we'll go in the order of Charlie, Cheryl, Todd, and Bobby. Question six is, what potential uses do you recommend for the former Texas, Texas Ranger Heritage Center?
You know, perception is always the truth. And I know there's been some back and forth by the city and, and those folks and the legal lawsuits that are going on. So what is the best use for that? That's a good question. And I'm going to tell you, I think the best use for it would be to somehow get in conversation again with the Texas Rangers Association and come up with a viable plan that they can move forward with. They've spent a lot of money there. They've done a lot of improvements. They've done the best they can. And I know there's circumstances that the city had to look at in order to deal with what they had to deal with. But as I understand, there's a lawsuit, and that's going to cost the citizens of Fredericksburg money to defend that. Whether we win or lose, I think we're going to lose, not the lawsuit necessarily, but I think we're going to lose a, a good partner for our community. So what, what, what can you do with it? I'm hoping that they're not, the city would develop that into a hotel, resort area. I, I don't have any idea. I did ask one of the council members, and at this time, there's, there's no idea. But my idea would be, let's reengage the Texas Rangers Association and see if we can't work this out. There's always a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
So the Texas Rangers issue is one that I've been trying to learn about the history of this whole, how this has gone down. I would say that at this point, I would be open to various proposals. I would hate to see this go the way of the Astrodome in Houston, where there were a million proposals, none of which were really very great. And at the end of the day, I'm not sure where they ended up. I left Houston, and yes, that's the end of that story. But what occurs to me is that that Texas Rangers property is immediately adjacent to Fort Martin Scott. It already has a lovely event space. I attended the Grace Center fundraiser there last summer. It's a really nice space. I think logically, it makes a lot of sense, now that the Texas Historical Commission is managing Fort Martin Scott, to enter in discussion with them about how they could utilize that space for their proposed activities and to expand in that way. Again, I think there's a lot of possibilities, and I think the city council would be open to a variety of options on that.
Great. Thank you very much. Todd?
First thing that I would want to do with is put a rainwater catchment system on the roof to pay for the landscaping and irrigation around the building. I think, you know, being close to Fort Martin Scott and the new City Hall campus, that could be a park with a small rec center. So there are currently undeveloped but decent trails behind the university center, behind Fort Martin Scott, and the Texas Ranger Center. I think that'd be a great launching point for some kind of additional park. I mean, you've got excellent parking there already. Everything's already developed. They have commercial catering kitchen. You have restrooms. I think it should fall under Parks and Rec.
Thank you very much. Bobby?
I've heard a lot of things about what it should be or could be, but I, I think the best thing to do is another committee to evaluate what are the best uses, usage, usages for that park, for that property. It's city property. I think we could also open it up for residents to use it, family reunions, other events, things like that. It's got a lot of parking. The, the only concern that I have about the building that's there, it's an open building. So you're limited to when you could use it comfortably. Fort Martin Scott is using it this weekend. And I think one thought was to turn it over to the Texas Historical Commission and allow them to take that into Fort Martin Scott as part of their operation there. I don't know if you realize, but Fort Martin Scott does have a full-time individual that has moved to Fredericksburg and is operating at the, at the fort. So that's, their plan is to have five people there full-time. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion on what the use will be, so.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, Bobby, you're going first again. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, Bobby, you're going first again. So question seven. Does the city council and mayor matter in a city manager form of government?
Yes, I mean, that's the way it's built, is the city manager runs the day-to-day. It's like a large corporation. You have a president that runs the day-to-day, and you have a board of directors that sets policy and gives direction. Yes, it's absolutely important.
Thank you. Todd?
Exactly what Bobby said. Absolutely. I mean, yes. The city manager is responsible for the employees and staff and the day-to-day operations. The city council listens to the citizens, takes up the hard issues that come on the agenda, and then lets staff and the city manager know the direction that we, the elected officials, want to take.
Yeah, exactly what Bobby said. Yes, absolutely.
Cheryl?
Yes, I would agree with that. I'm learning more and more as I explore what, how the city of Fredericksburg operates about various forms of government. And I absolutely agree that they're all essential. No matter how many employees you have, there's always, there's some overlap, but there's also different roles. And I absolutely agree. I think we need to all work together. To some extent, we each have a role of getting out in the community and getting feedback and providing that, not only to the city manager, but to the mayor. So, yes.
Charlie?
Yeah, absolutely. 110%. There's no question about the importance of the city council and the city manager. You know, again, we listen to the people. I listen to the people and bring those thoughts forward. Again, one person on the council. It takes three to buy into what I'm thinking. And then we can have policy done according to what the citizens would like us to do. You know, we're driven by the citizens of Fredericksburg. Sometimes I'm even driven and hear the people, taxation without, property owners being taxed without any representation, who have property inside the city limits, and they've asked me, why can't we have a voice? I say, you can have a voice, you just can't vote, you know? So those folks are as important, too. Community is always important. To me, it always has been. It's a functioning endeavor that I've always been on. When I was elected onto the city council, I will tell you, I've always had a good relationship with the city manager, Kent Myers. I have a great relationship with Clinton. And as far as I know, I'm pretty sure of the people I've met there, city staff and workers, and I allude that to what Bobby had said. The most important asset we have aren't the hard buildings, the bricks and the motors. It's the people, the people that work for us, the citizens. And I will tell you, if they ever weren't there, you don't want me driving that bulldozer or trash truck around, because no telling what I'd hit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. But I thought you ran a gas station.
I didn't have a bulldozer.
So we have time for one question from one person in the audience, and Beth Valley, do you have a question? Come on up. The order will be Charlie, Bobby, Todd, and Cheryl.
Hi there. I've lived here for just over 10 years, and something that's important to me, that I don't see a huge issue here that you guys, that is presented often, is about recycling. Given that our city currently does not offer curbside recycling, and that glass is not accepted at our recycling center, even though we have a large number of wineries and businesses that produce glass waste, what is your plan to expand and improve our recycling options for residences and businesses, keeping in mind that both Kerrville and Johnson City offer curbside recycling?
Yeah. You know, we've looked at this before. Let me get to glass. You know, there was a time we were collecting glass, but we were shipping it out, paying to have it shipped out, and it was just being put in a dump site, because there was no value in glass. Currently, as I understand, cardboard, metal, newsprint, news magazines do have value and can be shipped out for a profit. We're very blessed to have what we have. Could it be expanded? As I understand, probably in the next three to five years, we're going to go to a collection system at the sanitation department. I still call it the dump grounds, I'm sorry. That's the German culture in me. And you'll be delivering the trash there. It'll be picked up and taken to a recycling center. And from what I understand, after it gets there, I mean, that's all the trash. Whatever you throw in your trash can is going to be taken there. And then it goes to a recycling center. And I did see a program once where they actually followed one of these, and at the end of the day, all they had left was a size of a hay bale, a small hay bale. So expanding the current recycling, I don't think that it's going to enlarge any. But again, we recycle. We don't recycle as much as I'd like to. But again, it's the neighborly thing, you know? Take your recycling what you can to the recycling. Same thing with water conservation. It all begins at home with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
The city has already started planning for the future in developing a transfer station, which would be built at the city...
Sanitation landfill.
Sanitation landfill.
Dump grounds.
As part of that, it would be full recycling. Everything would be brought into the transfer station. It would be taken to a location where everything would be divided out, and that can be recycled, would be recycled. And then the rest would be taken to another landfill at a different location that does not belong to Fredericksburg. Not only is recycling a good benefit of the transfer station, but we won't be burying our trash over our water table. So if there's ever a leak in the water, in the sanitation landfill...
I'm sorry, sanitary landfill.
Sanitary. That trash won't have any chance of contaminating our water table. So I'm all in favor of the transfer station. One of the things we found out in looking at this was...
Thirty seconds.
One year of trash for Fredericksburg is one day in San Antonio. So that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Todd?
Former Texas Rangers area, we could do a big recycling center there. I'm sorry. Yes, so the city landfill only has eight years of life left, so we are forced, and that's a good thing, as Bobby said about water quality and leakage, we are forced to go to a transfer station type of way to getting rid of our trash. So all the trash that's collected will then be trucked to San Antonio. So in doing this, sanitation staff is kind of freed up, in a sense, so that we can focus more efforts on recycling. And that would include curbside recycling, potentially. Of course, it comes with a little bit of upfront costs, so all the citizens got to get on board and know that rates may change if you pay attention to what your water, your sewer, and your garbage rate is. But I think it's something that's coming. May not be tomorrow, may not be in the next exact two years, but it's coming. It's definitely on city staff's mind.
Thank you. Cheryl?
So many of the things that have been said I agree with. When I first started hearing from city council and coffee with the city manager about this transfer station, I was very excited. I often think that we need to remember that the cost of doing things, we need to balance that with the cost of doing nothing. And in this case, as Todd has alluded to, doing nothing to change our current system is putting our water supply in grave danger. We are blessed to have water supply that comes from our aquifer, not surface water, but we cannot risk endangering that. I would also say a couple of things about personal responsibility. I think we need to each remember that the amount of trash that's generated, we have quite a bit of control over. We can put pressure on ourselves, some of our local real tailors, to bring our own bags, bring all the things that we need, use reusable water bottles, all those things. And we know that. We've been doing Earth Day things since we were in elementary school, but it's easy to forget because of convenience. I've been a part of discussions of a couple of different recycling initiatives here in town, particularly related to glass and the wine industry. Those are still in conversation. Recycling, unfortunately, is a market-driven...
Thirty seconds.
...thing. And it makes it difficult for even those who really want to recycle things sometimes, to find a way to do it that is profitable to them. I support the city in all the efforts that we're moving toward to find solutions to our sanitary, solid waste thing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. We're going to move into our closing statements. Each candidate will have three minutes to make the statement. We'll go in the order of Cheryl, Bobby, Todd, and Charlie. Cheryl?
Thank you again, whoa. Sorry. Thank you again to Jim and the chamber for hosting and moderating this forum. I really appreciate the tone this evening, the collegiality, and the goodwill. And I also want to thank my fellow candidates for your thoughts on these important issues. I am not running against these folks. We are four people running to fill two city council seats. None of us can foresee the future. We can make predictions based on history, logic, and awareness of the facts, but at the end of the day, we cannot know how reality will unfold, which means that we must trust one another and work together to navigate our future. Choices to act in certain ways have consequences, as well as choices to not act, as I just said. My life experiences have honed my skills in leadership, collaboration, and community knowledge. I believe that I can navigate complex issues, make informed decisions, and foster a sense of unity. I hope that you now know a little bit more about me and how I think about certain issues. As much or as little as I know about a particular topic or issue, there will always be more to learn. I hope this evening has given you a sense of my heart and my desire to serve. Over the past seven years, my love for this community and all the people who call it home has only grown. If elected, I pledge to serve you with dedication, respect, and a willingness to listen. Together, we can build on the rich heritage of Fredericksburg while embracing innovation and progress. Fredericksburg is where all of us call home, whether you've lived here for generations, moved here within the last year, or anywhere in between. I hope you share my vision of one Fredericksburg and one hometown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Bobby?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I'd like to thank the Albert, Security State Bank, Fredericks FPG Live. This has been one of the best forums that I've ever attended, and I've attended a couple of them. I'd ask you to please read my bio that's in the paper this week. That will give you an idea of what I've done in the community, all the committees that I've served on, the groups that I've been involved with, and just give you a little more background. I could list them tonight, but I don't have enough time. But I think the point is, Fredericksburg is an absolutely special place in Texas and the United States. I feel very privileged to live here. I feel privileged to be on city council for the 10 years that I have, and to represent you. That's been one of my greatest joys in my professional career. There are a couple people, or a couple things I'd like to thank. That's the city council that I've, all the city council members that I've worked with. I will tell you, our main focus is you. We make decisions on what we feel like is best for this community. I'd like to thank Clinton, the staff at the city, and the employees that make Fredericksburg what it is. We have the best streets in the state. Everything we do, trash pickup, leaf pickup, all that is extra things that we do for nothing. And you go to other cities and ask about that, and they don't have it. But it's been a real privilege and honor for me to serve Fredericksburg for 10 years on council. I hope to continue, so please go out and vote on May 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Yes. Thank you again to the chamber. Thank you to the Albert. The HEB room at the old University Center, the new City Hall, is an asset to our community, but it's got nothing on this. We're very blessed and lucky. Thanks, Jim, for putting this on over here. I serve on the Historic Review Board, and I get to sit, and it's only once a month, and we're certainly not as important as city council, but I have the honor and privilege to sit at the dais once a month at night and engage with the citizens who come before us and staff. And I tell you, it's a humbling experience, and I don't take it lightly, but I actually really enjoy it. And I'm looking forward to sitting behind that dais in the morning as a city council person, and I will work for you. I want to mention a few facts that I have learned in my campaign, and I find this very interesting, because it's all 60%. We mentioned it before, 60% of our water consumption in town goes to landscape. 60% of our arrests are for alcohol violations. 60% of our code violations noted by code enforcement are watering issues. 60% of our sales tax comes from, 60% of our tax income comes from sales tax, which is helped by tourism. And the sad thing is, 60% of our citizens can't afford a home at the current market rate in Fredericksburg. So I just thought it's interesting how everything came up to 60%. So I would encourage you to please, please go vote, no matter who you choose. There is no school board election. There's no school bond election. There's no city bond election. There's no city charter amendment. When you walk in that booth, you're just going to have four boxes, and you get two to choose from. So please go vote. It's real simple. I appreciate the fact that it's been made easy. All early voting and voting day is at the Gillespie County Elections Office, 95 Frederick Road. Can't be simpler. Check out my website, toddforfbg.com, or check me out on Facebook, Todd for FBG City Council. Thank you all very much for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Charlie?
Danke schön. Muchas gracias. Thank you all. Appreciate everyone that's been here tonight, the people that are live streaming. Thank you all for being patient and watching as well. Kudos to these facilities. Kudos to Jim, Security State Bank. You know, really appreciate everything you all have done. You know, over the course of my adult life, I've been in positions that have given me the opportunity to discuss Fredericksburg with people from all walks of life, that have the opportunity to hear a wide variety of opinions and ideas regarding our community almost every day for the past five decades. As a result, I have not, as a result, I have not only have a lot of practice listening, which my wife sometimes says I'm not, but I am, but I've also gained a perspective and the understanding of the pulse of our community and town. I may not always agree with you, with your view, but I will always listen to you, and I will consider your ideas. Your consideration and support and vote... Your consideration and support and vote will be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much, and if you do read my bio in the paper, you're going to see my personal cell number and my personal email. My business address is 734 South Washington Street. The old Central Texas Building, we're right next to the American Legion Hall. My job as a Realtor gives me very much flexible time. I don't mind drop-ins. If you see my white truck, my F-150, or my red moped, I'm there. If I'm not there, I will respond to every call, to every text, and to every email. I will communicate with you. Communication is so very, very important, and I'm going to share one quick story about how important it is, real quick. I have a six-year-old grandson named Henry. We're sitting at the breakfast table one morning, visiting. Oh, we have a donut club, I always spoil them with donuts, because they always eat all this healthy food. Anyway, Henry says, "Grandpa, do you have any friends?" I gave that a thought. "Yeah, Henry, I got a few. Would you like me to name them?" And he said, "Grandpa, don't they already have names?" So communication is so very, very, you need to understand and communicate. He hit me right on the nail. I knew what I was talking about, and he knew what he was talking about. That's why we need to have questions, and I want to be that voice on City Council that raises questions, that maybe, you know, it's out-of-the-box kind of questions, you know? And I've done that before, and I'll continue to do it if you all are kind enough to elect me for the City Council. Thank you very much. You all have a great evening, have a holy and blessed Easter, and hopefully, the Easter bunny, oh, will come to your house and bring you golden eggs. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you, Charlie. So, to wrap this up, I'd like to thank Security State Bank for sponsoring us tonight. Reminder, early voting starts next week. I'd like to thank the candidates for your strong spirit of service to our community, and you can go to your spin rooms now. Fox, CNN, NBC, and CBS are waiting for you. Thank you all very much.
How about the bar?[1674.21]